Welcome everybody to the Westwood School Committee meeting, February 7. We will be recorded tonight by the Westwood Media Center. Thank you for joining us. Anybody else that's going to be doing any recording, I just found out we need to ask other people to record it. I'd like to start our meeting off with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start off with the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Thanks. So I'm going to start with a quick MSBA project update. We think that hopefully the feasibility study is finally arriving. So next week, the MSBA board is meeting on February 13, 10:00 a.m., and we have been invited to attend. This presumably would be where they vote us into the feasibility phase of the project. So Keith, Charlie, Maya, and I will attend that meeting on behalf of the community. And once that happens, we really can be off and running on the next phase. As you recall, the first step is to hire an OPM. I'm sure that there may be a short period of time where after the vote, they --
I got it, I got it.
Somebody --
I got it, I got it.
Is that disrupting?
Thank you. Alright, so there may be a short period of time after the vote where we actually have to execute a few documents for moving into the feasibility study, but it's not like when we were voted into eligibility and they gave us a start date like months hence. It will be fairly immediate after we get this vote in this week. So we had talked previously about trying to be really ready to start work on that OPM process after we get voted, and so we've done a little bit of work. In the interim, I've talked to Michelle Miller Peck, who's the procurement officer for the town, and Ephes has compiled a bunch of materials from the MSBA about the process of selecting an OPM. They do have a model RFE, actually RFS for services, I guess, RFS, that looks quite good, so I think we will not be reinventing the wheel. I think we just need to think about our particulars and go into some information. We also have a sample in another district as used recently. So Maya and I are going to be talking about when the school building committee needs to meet, and --
Do we already have a committee established?
Committee's established, that was just a matter of getting the green light and getting to work.
Why are you thinking about first meeting?
I mean, I think soon, we've just started talking about that, but I think certainly by March.
Yeah, maybe early March if we can. Better is tough at the break.
Yeah, right.
But if we can shoot for early March.
What kinds are you aiming for? Like, is it going to be like --
Maybe evening.
Like dinner time?
Yeah. And then once we're there, we'll set it.
So there's the chairman of the committee. We've read all the school committees, we should be on it if you will. And we've got a lot of distinguished town representatives representing different constituencies in the committee.
Could you just redistribute the look, because it's been a little lass. Remember who was on it?
Who's on the chair?
No, nothing, everything.
All the committee, like early morning, and stuff like that. Can you talk about that at the meeting?
First, no, yeah. Any other questions on this process? Thank you all, I thank all the staff for putting everything together, all the documents and following what the state building committee was looking for. So we're very lucky to be before them and to maybe get some early from them. Thank you for all of the help you've assisted on.
Okay. And then just a quick security audit update. So I met with the folks who are doing this work today, this afternoon, and had a conversation with them, and they are wrapping up their data collection phase. I think it has ended up being somewhat more extensive process than anticipated originally. And they tell me that by, we the first week of March, they have a draft of their written recommendations for us to consider. You know, I did try to tease out of them a few details. I think that we're going to find that there's a lot of good news, that they're reporting that, you know, the culture of the district is that people feel safe and secure. So there will be some good news, and they also know that we've done some things over the last couple of years to increase our security, and they're kind of, you know, call out those issues. And then they've also identified some things that they think we could potentially do, both in terms of training and also in terms of some of the more technical things. So I think it's a little premature to talk about cost, but once we get that recommendation, we can really start to take a look at that and think about pricing and priorities and how maybe to phase in those recommendations.
Will they be doing a presentation first before we decide or before we decide level of response?
Yes, yes.
Give us a menu.
And as I mentioned last month, you know, we've had some discussions at Vike Steering about the potential of, at the Springtown meeting, having some FY19 funding allocated to get started on some of these recommendations, so that we could really be off and running if there's something that we think, you know, let's start work on this this spring.
And when's the drop date? Does that mean it's not May? So when is the drop date date on those Warren articles, I guess?
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I believe the selection has closed that now, but there is an article already about sort of, you know, every year, Pam presents something to kind of do some final transfers for FY19, so it would be in that.
But there's a drop date date before May, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Just be able to find out what that is.
Yeah, I can ask that.
Do we make sure that we have given enough anyway in terms of the timing of this meeting so we could have the fire chief and the police chief here too, so that they can weigh in? Because we really need them to weigh in. Okay, maybe we don't need that, that may be too over the top, right?
Or it might be overlapping.
Or it's something that we already have with the --
Yeah.
Are they looking, I mean, I know it's this townwide security audit.
Well, this is just the school phase stuff.
So they are looking at it, they're not looking at it holistically, they're looking at it sort of building by building?
So they, so this part of the audit was the school department buildings, and they are going to make recommendations building by building. I will say that the fire chief and the police chief were included as part of this process, so that was certainly one of the things that we were looking at, is how we, you know, one, how we interact, and also I think the fire chief and the police chief have some perspective on some of these issues that we wanted to have included in the process. But they haven't done the municipal phase yet.
Oh.
Do we have a chance to have a kind of public opportunity to ask questions or make suggestions as part of some days, or you'll be able to answer questions also and receive feedback from people?
Yes.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Westwood Cultural Council?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention and publicly thank the Westwood Cultural Council. They have given us a $1,000 grant to support a patron course, it's our Be a Maker course, and we are very appreciative of their support and thank them.
Which courses?
It's a course that we ran last year, it's called Be a Maker, and so it's an art course, and they did glass glowing and sculpture and all kinds of different media.
So where are we now in terms of, we have, we've had three donations, so to speak, for J.J. We're looking at, not to get, I want to get off topic, we're looking at maybe a deficit of, what, 20, roughly 20 grand, so we're at five, six, seven, close to eight?
Yeah, we pulled in close to eight, we had 25 budgeted, so we're pretty close, and I mean, we have a contingency plan to cover this, yeah.
If we can stand and feel the thanks. Looking at me? No. I have not asked Noah what anything to talk about, or talk about, but I can be, probably to help him a little bit with this.
Right.
Thanks. Thank you for the, as far as --
That's fantastic.
Us always asking for a hand, okay? No, happy to do it.
And I thought, and it might just take a couple of minutes for us to look at some smiling faces and talk about what's happening in our schools before we jump into numbers. So up on the screen here, we have some of our students from the middle school, and they just competed in the math counts competition. And these kids, Violet Jean, Jason Guo, Jessica Wang, and Gavin Valentino are going to be representing us at the state meet for math counts on March 2nd, they qualified, so congratulations to them. Good luck, well done. And then, this is a photograph from just today at Westwood High School, February is Black History Month. Our professional development in November, you may remember that we had some of our African-American students speak to teachers about their experience as students here in Westwood, and talk about some of the things that they wished we could do. And one of those things was to really step up our reputation of Black History Month, so we've been doing that in a lot of ways. This was an initiative that was an African-American reading that happened in the high school library today. I want to thank Teresa Fisher, who was our new high school librarian, for organizing it. And it's actually a national event, it's been held for about 29 years nationally, but this is the first time we've participated. And so any students who were interested were able to come to the library, and they had chosen poems or passages by African-American authors, and it was sort of like a poetry slam kind of format, where you would get up and take the mic and, you know, do your reading, and then sit down, and whoever was moved to speak next would come up. And it went on a little period.
That's great.
Really great, we heard a lot of Club McCann and the St. Andrew's. It's great.
Little Tupac.
Little Tupac, that's real, he did. And then finally, I have a two-minute video that was put together by Mary Comer, who's one of our instructional technology specialists, instructional technology coaches, I'm sorry, at the elementary level. And we talk a lot about third grade coding here, and I thought that you might enjoy seeing it in action. I had been visiting the Sheehan School about a week ago and happened upon one of these classes, and it was really neat, and so she put this together for us. Here we go, some coding. I'll do the -- These are challenges they have, where they're using iPads to do block coding to tell the robots what to do. And so they first spend a lot of time planning what they're going to do for their code. This is one of my favorites. So that gives you a little glimpse into what's happening in third grade coding. I will say that while we were there, their classroom teacher came to pick them up from the special, and it was like we couldn't get them to stop, and I mean, they were really, really enjoying it.
You know, Emily, if I could just interject, the one where the books are being carried in the library, that was actually part of the fourth, fifth grade collaboration that we're working on this year, and that was called the Dewey Dash. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the expansion into the upper grades is something that we're actively working on.
Right, thanks for the plug.
Yeah.
Chris, any updates on the high school?
No, actually, you know, at least on West State Council, we've been working on a lot of what we're talking about later, on the East cigarette use.
Maybe one of our next weeks, we can get a little bit more into the fourth and fifth grade initiatives, how we're moving the kids on. I think we had tremendous feedback last year from the parents, the greatest, the big problem was what are they doing for the next two years? So that'd be great to hear more of an update on that, but thank you for sharing that with us. Public participation, this is a part, we open up for anybody that have any thoughts or suggestions to make to us, to go forward and speak. If you have anything to say, we'd like to identify yourself, your address, and we just, I keep to about two minutes. Yes?
Christina Martin, 23th grade, Brookfield Group. Regarding the coding, my kids have loved it, and my fifth grader was very upset that he missed out on the chance to have it as a special, which my third grader this year does have it as a special. So I think that's fully worth the investment, and I hope we do more of that and catch that fifth grade class up, so they don't get left behind. And then, my other question is, I wanted to see if, in the past, so like I said, I have a fifth grader, so moving on to middle school this year, and in the past, there's been discussion about a Gay Street Alliance at the middle school, and I wanted to see if any progress had been made on that. I think it's really important for the kids to have access to that, and so I'm just hoping we can make progress, but I'm wondering kind of where we stand with that.
So we have been having some discussions about that, and I'm just on the spot, that are we, or, perhaps it's the right person, so we're just going to keep going. Are we making progress on that front, have we?
We are. Our guidance department and our school adjustment counselor have actually come up to the high school to spend some time with the staff that are currently running it here, to better understand what it could look like as we go to, as we bring that down to the middle school level. I would say that the reality would be that we're looking more at the beginning of next year, just for a variety of variables, and for it to be implemented well, and so that's where we're at right now.
And can you just give us like more idea, like what kinds of variables?
What kinds of variables? Really, the variables are the people that we're looking at putting into practice are, we're already doing other things during after-school activities, before school activities this year. So it just really wasn't going to line up with kind of scheduling for the people that were interested and we felt would be best, best able to run that.
So is that the main holdup? Is just get the alignment of people and availability?
It would be the people and availability, but also them feeling comfortable with doing that going forward. Yes.
Any other questions or public participation? Thank you all for coming tonight, and --
There's the opportunity, there's the budget, kind of public hearing is after this, right?
Yes.
I think there's someone in the back. My name's Julie McDonald, I live at 145 School Street. I have a first grade daughter at Hanlon, and going into second grade, the class sizes, from what I understand, are above the guidelines, so the guideline for second grade, my understanding is between 18 and 22. Current class size for the second grade would be 46 children. The current proposal is to have a half-time shared assistant between the two second grade classrooms, and I'd like to see if we can explore a better solution for that second grade class. I think it's too large of a class. I think there's some other options potentially to look at. Could we find space for a third classroom within the Hanlon School? I don't know all the space constraints there, but potentially could we use the extended day classroom during the day as a third classroom for one of the grades? Could we potentially look at trailers, temporary trailers? But we have four more years where this class size could potentially be a problem, and Principal Cronin's been, I think, looking for creative solutions for us the last two years, which have worked out, but now we're seeing the constraints, and I think we need to look creatively for either a third classroom that will carry this class through at their Hanlon years, or if that's not a possibility, at least look for additional support. A half-day assistant for two second grade class, I don't think is acceptable.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hi, my name's Amanda, I also have a child in the first grade at the Hanlon School, and I'd like to echo what Julie said.
What is your last name, please?
Phillips. I think we need to look at solutions to bring down the class size. From what I gather, looking at this year's numbers, the average is about 18 students, and at the Hanlon, we're looking at 23 students from this year, so it seems a little bit inhaleable across town. Also, I read that according to 2017 statistics put out by the Department of Education, that would put us in the top 5% across the state in terms of class size, which I find, you know, a little bit concerning, that, you know, Westwood would have a class that large, you know, compared to the rest of the state. So I'd like to see what we could do to either get a third classroom, or, you know, at a minimum, a full-time instructional assistant in each class. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, yes?
I'm also here as a Hanlon parent with concerns with just the class sizes going forward, and --
Could you just identify yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Floru Gucci. I live at 211 School Street, and I have a first grader at the Hanlon, and just would like to explore some more options to see how we can accommodate these students, not only for academic, but for social requirements, going forward with how big the class size is, going from a K1 class this year, with the age in the classroom, and the age in the classroom last year with kindergarten, how do we transition to two big class sizes without that extra help in the classroom?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes?
Hi, yes, my name is Ethel Ross, I also have a first grader at the Hanlon, and I am here with these other moms, and I have similar concerns about the class sizes for the secondary, well, the little secondary's next year.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? As you may know, we have heard an awful lot every single year as our numbers go through, and I think we've been able to respond and do responsible things, so we're very thankful for you coming forward, and we will definitely get back to you and respond on this, but thank you for coming in tonight, let us know your thoughts. Anything else you want to say? Okay, we will now move on to our next item, discussion item, so social emotional learning, curriculum review findings. And I'd just like, by way of introduction, maybe we could just, to the general audience, define what are the issues that we're dealing with for this program?
You get that slide?
Oh, I'm always very slow.
So thank you. I think I'm going to go from here, where I have all this stuff, and because there's a microphone, I don't want my back to the camera this evening. This was a great and very interesting process, and it actually kind of, in some ways, grew out of some work that started last year. And if you remember, we had a goal last year, Goal 8, that had to do with developing and supporting practices that acknowledge the diverse backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges of students. As part of meeting that goal, we embarked on some professional development around SEL, particularly at the elementary level, but also there was some PD that people at other levels access. And kind of from what we heard from some of our educators, they really wanted to learn more, they wanted to dig in more, and felt like the time was very good. So this work in part is rolling out of kind of continuation of some things that we started last year. We had just an extraordinary group of people who worked, and a large group of people who worked on this project. Lots of representation from all over the district, so a big, big committee. Part of that was because it's a little different type of review, we wanted to have widespread representation, and also part of the goal of this review was to sort of build the knowledge base and skill set of core group people that could kind of go out and become ambassadors to the rest of the district. So it's notable that in this group, there are many, many educators who wear different hats, including a couple of people who have kids in the Western Public School, so both parents and educators, and a couple former students of the Western Public School that are part of this group. And a real huge thank you to all of those folks who participated. So to turn to this point, what are we talking about? We're talking about social emotional learning. I think it's a key point when we think about SEL. This is a kind of common understanding definition provided by a organization called CASL, which is the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning. When you talk about SEL, it's not something that's a discrete set of lessons or activity, it's something that we have all done, and hopefully are continuing to do throughout our lives. And it's, it has to do with building a set of competencies over time, and that those competencies are not going to happen just through a set of lessons, they happen through, you know, things that you do at home, things that you learn at school as well, so it's a really infused process. In addition, I'd say it's not something that we think of as only for a certain subset of kids. SEL is not about addressing mental health needs necessarily, it's really about something we're doing for everybody, and that's a critical distinction that I think we have said a lot, and we keep saying it. This organization, CASL, has emerged as a leader in the field, and they have developed this sort of framework for understanding what SEL is. This is their sort of broadest view of the framework. If you look at the outside circles, those rings tell you a little bit about where SEL happens, where kids are doing their social and emotional learning, and how. So the where is at the top, the how is at the bottom, and then in the middle is the what, what are we talking about? And they've broken down into five different buckets, and within each of those buckets, they've also provided more detailed descriptors. So just to take one example, self-management includes things like motivation, goal setting, organizational skills, stress management, those are put forward to that bucket. It was a big long list of kind of discrete skills that break out into these different competency areas. This is not new, okay? I'm going to take a moment to pay homage to a master of SEL, we'll all take a moment. And these are not new ideas to parents or educators or people who do children's television or anything, right? And just as a, as a quick, let's see if we can follow.
Getting to be friends is like building bridges. Some people think that friends are always happy, always having fun. Well, that's not true. Friends often have hard times and sad times, but friends can come together again and again and build a stronger and stronger friendship between each other. It's such a good feeling to know.
I hate to cut off Mr. Rogers. You get my drift. If I could sit down kids in the middle of a middle school, hear a relational issue and just be like, remember this? This guy was on to something. I think it's important, and actually, you know, well before 1970's PBS programming, you know, way back as far as Plato's Republic, you know, there are these ideas about education that included both sort of an academic component, a physical component, an arts component, and a sort of character and moral development component, you know, wanting to sort of build these parts of the person that are not just the sort of intellectual parts. So old, old, old idea, but it's become a new thing because in recent years, so starting in the 1990's, that term, social emotional learning, was coined, and it kind of grew out of a lot of work happening in New Haven, Connecticut, there's a college down there somewhere, and they were doing tons of research in the public schools. So Yale had a center that was going into the schools to look at what works in school, and one of the things that they found is what works in schools when you pay attention to these competencies, not just academic performance. And CASL actually was formed out of the Yale kind of work going on, and then eventually moved to Chicago, and Yale has its own group now. A kind of, a question of why now? Why are we kind of looking at this now? I'd say, you know, first and foremost, we have educators asking to look for it, they're noticing that there are kids who struggle with these skills, and they're noticing that we need help figuring out how to help them get better. We've also noticed an increasing -- They're noticing that there are kids who struggle with these skills and they're noticing that we need help figuring out how to help them get better. We've also noticed an increase in some mental health issues at a younger age. SEL isn't a magic thing that is gonna solve all those issues, but we do think it has some preventative role by helping do things that research says it does, like reducing instances of aggression and emotional distress, helping increase some positive behaviors in school, all those things that roll out. Research very clearly shows a connection between SEL and academic performance and also these big lifelong factors. So folks who have had SEL, when they look at a twenty-five-year timeline, have fewer instances of psychological and behavioral problems as well as substance abuse problems at a later age. And, you know, it's become a kind of big focal point in the educational world the last ten years or so. There's a lot of interesting stuff going on, we wanna be part of it. That's kind of why we're doing it now. Got a lot of Mr. Rogers into the next slide. Sorry. Okay. So, just as a point of contrast, you know, we had to approach this review a little bit differently because SEL is a different type of learning. Unlike English, which we're engaging, we have this sort of handy book of all the curriculum standards. So I can thumb through this and find something like, in grade five, we need kids to learn to use birth tests to determine various time sequence and states and conditions among blah, blah, blah. There's a whole book of things like that that are very content-oriented and concrete and a whole book of skills that sort of spiral through the curriculum. This doesn't have that set of, that much detail in terms of developmental standards yet, it has these broad competencies. Also, Castle isn't the only game in town. They are emerging as leaders, but there are different frameworks that people are looking at and using. It is a relatively new research focus, primarily since the mid-nineties, it's all ramped up. And there's tons and tons of program options. One resource the group looked at, there's this big, big report on all the different well-known programmatic approaches. And researchers took each of those, took it apart and looked at the strengths and weaknesses of each and kind of gave robust program descriptions. So our team actually looks through to see what are some of the ways that programs are described and what they do. So our process looked a little, a little different than it would with math or English, which is a little more of a year. And here's what it was. So we started by generating a whole bunch of guiding questions, what do we want to know? And for example, one big question at the elementary level was, do we think that open circle is effective? They've been using this type of competency curriculum for a while, does it work? After kind of formulating those questions, we did a lot of outreach, a lot of reading, a lot of research. So we started with a set of focus groups with students, parents, and educators. So questions for students include things like, you know, how and when do students learn how to treat each other? For parents, things like, what's the school's role in supporting this social emotional learning for your child? And for other educators, what are you currently doing and what do you think works and what doesn't? We also did a lot of outreach to other districts and it was kind of all over the map. We had charter schools, we had places in Texas, we had nearby metro west communities just to find out, what are you using? Do you like it? Is it working or not? Throughout the review, we also had this push to sort of educate ourselves. So we looked at a lot of secondary literature and video and talked and thought together about what is this thing that we're trying to get our hands around? And again, the goal is to sort of raise our own understanding. So this team would be well-equipped to help us when we get to the implementation phase. Finally, we did, as I mentioned before, some program comparison and then we looked at some student data through the VOCAL survey, which is the survey that the Department of Ed ran after the fifth grade, eighth grade, and tenth grade EM Pass. And a lot of the questions really speak to social emotional realm. And we took a look at that as a little bit of information we could add to our understanding of what are the things we need to be working on. And after all that, drafted some recommendations. We just finished that last week, last week. Last week, here is. So I'm gonna share some of these recommendations with you. Starting at the broadest level, these are things that cut across the entire district. And we kind of organized them into buckets. Under leadership, we've already talked a little bit about the idea of having a social emotional learning coordinator to work with the younger grades, K to eight. In addition to that, there, we also thought it makes sense to have sort of a leadership team to help support that implementation. One person alone isn't gonna be able to run around and do everything. So having a group that helps. We have a similar model right now with science, where our elementary science coordinator is really supported by the work of a team. Since there's just one of her and a specialist in five different schools, this team really helps us make sure we can cover a lot of ground. We also felt like it's really important to develop a clear vision for SEL that aligns with the district's goals and priorities, that that, the first work of that team would be exactly that work. What do we want it to look like for students at the end point of this process? A lot of recommendations around curriculum instruction and professional development, including, you know, finding some programs that really meet the needs at different levels and that are woven into the daily life of schools. Really ensuring that all employees have some baseline understanding of what we're talking about with social and emotional. Our kids interact with everybody throughout the day and one of the things about this skill set is a lot of the opportunities to practice aren't necessarily happening in the classroom, they're in the cafeteria, or in the office, or out in the playground. So the adults in those arenas really need to kind of be well-versed in what we're doing and what we're talking about. We really wanted to talk about providing PD around how we really reach kids who feel marginalized in one way or another, who maybe are part of groups that don't see what's going on in Western as an even playing field and what do we do about that? And finally, there is this sort of self-reflection piece. A lot of the literature around SEL says really effective implementation happens when adults are kind of aware of their own strengths and weaknesses in these realms. In fact, we're gonna, this is, it's gonna be a fun date night activity. This is a self-assessment for other people. The team did this. And really the idea is kind of get a handle on where you feel like you fall in these competencies. So, you know, you can do this with your significant other and talk about the results and, you know.
I already paid enough for a shrink.
He's gonna be taking her own...
It's a measure. It's so different from any other type of curriculum. Measure the assess, the effectiveness.
You know, it's funny, my next slide, we talk a lot has some assessment. So I will say, district-wide, right now, what we wrote down for assessment is people feel like we need to start by looking at existing data first. Really understanding what is the impact when you look at things like the VOCAL data, which speaks to some of these competencies, but also, you know, referral data, visits to the nurse that aren't actually about being sick. Some of those kinds of data are really telling around SEL competencies. Can kids work things out or do they end up in the vice principal's office?
So would you assess generally, I mean, data across the grades or would you assess within each grade? Would you look at certain individuals, like a test? I mean, if you have certain kids that tend to go to nurse on a regular basis, are you gonna sort of follow that?
Yeah. That's interesting. So districts that are a little further along are actually using tools that kind of get, that are part of the programs that get adopted. And those tools allow you to do a little bit more of that level of tracking. And so that will be where we go next. And there are tools that, for example, allow you to do a very quick, you know, five-question questionnaire or seven-question questionnaire about all of the students in your class. And then anyone who sort of pings out of that seven-question questionnaire is maybe needing a little more in-depth look. There's a longer and robust, more robust assessment tool. Once that tool gives you a picture of where the weaknesses are, you can actually zero-in and work specifically on this by doing friendship groups, providing more services and supports. So, you want to just do it?
We have a lot of big data set, data. If you remember the Youth Behavior Risk Survey, there's, you know, really using that and really digging into that, that is a wonderful resource. So I think that first step is really looking at these things we have and getting the most out of them.
So is that where you create a baseline, take a...
A snapshot of what the students are reporting currently, right?
So are we doing professional development for that?
Yes.
Because this is kind of a new skill set. We're trying to get our teachers to...
Yes, yes. This is gonna take a sort of multi-year training process to get everybody...
I would guess though that with new teachers and new training, that this is a major part of, as opposed to...
It's coming through the teacher colleges, I think it depends what you need, right? It depends on that a little bit. And some of these programs that have been developed are very, you know, they've been at it for a while and they really have lots of systems and structures and supports in place that you might not learn unless you happen to have a, be working with a, in a student teaching situation where you're partnering with somebody who you can see that in action. It's not stuff you can really do in the abstract, you have to actually have an opportunity to practice it.
A lot of the older tools still have enabled development in some of these...
A big piece of this is around parent community outreach. We want to make sure that, first of all, that people know and understand what we're talking about when we talk about SEL, that people understand all of the short and long-term benefits of us taking this on. And then finally, finding opportunities to sort of partner with parents so that kids get lots of opportunities to practice skills while they're not in school and that we're kind of on the same page about what those skills are. So those are the big, broad recommendations. Oh, this one, space and time. These are some of the interesting ones. And this is thinking a little bit about the environment, right? Because we want to make sure that our school buildings and our schedules and all those structures that we have in place are supporting kids' social emotional...
Example, this is very broad.
This is very broad. So I'll give you a concrete example, Lexington High School has, you know, high test, high-stress environment. They basically developed a sort of space, it's a drop-in space for kids who are just kind of online. But, you know, some of it, I think, is, can be other things. You know, one of the high school team members, Tim Chance, like, wouldn't it be great if we figure out how to staff the fitness center so that kids at the high school level, where kids are making more decision-making, have more decision-making power, they use their free block to go do something physical. Schedules can go across all levels. People having the feeling like there are ways we could do things with scheduling or kind of restructure or refine to make sure kids have appropriate time to play and reflection and...
I was thinking drop-in centers, something you could do without a whole other... Can we do a...
Depends on...
No, I don't think, you know what I mean. Can't we just bring in a drop-in?
I do think, I will say, I think the effectiveness of what happened in Lexington had to do a little bit with student buy-in initiative. So I think it would have to really be something where, with high school students, we want them to be sort of involved in thinking through the design space. The other thing I want to be careful about with Mr. Rogers, space is becoming a... It's not giving away space that they don't actually have. I have a closet in the office. So you're kind of shifting gears to specifically, these are sort of a little bit more drilled down to the elementary level. So elementary felt like it was very important that in that sort of district leadership team, that there was leadership at each school and those who represent a kind of way of charge. They really zeroed in on responsive classroom, which is a particular type of SEL-related program. A responsive classroom is different from the open circle type curriculum that we have now. So instead of being a set of lessons, it really is a set of practices that teachers use and infuse throughout the day. It's a kind of a language and approach and almost like a philosophy. And elementary teachers, I think, really gravitated toward this for a few reasons. One is that they've noticed that if you just do lessons and you don't have this infused throughout the day, that kids don't necessarily generalize. They might talk a good game when they're sitting in front of you in the circle, but then they go out in the playground and do, you know, whatever they do out there. So somehow, we need to find ways to really reinforce this.
Do you have examples of how we might do that?
I don't know the program all that Abby knows it better.
Also, responsive classroom would start, for example, with a teacher who's committed to infusing throughout the day in teachable moments during academic instruction, opportunities to notice when things are going well and call that out and highlight it. There's a morning meeting frequently, which is part of that model, where people get together and check in and say morning to each other. You may have seen videos over, you know, the years, there are teachers who have special high fives and waves for each of the little kids that come through. And all of that is a piece of this mindset of saying hello, knowing how you're doing, if you're having a good day, a bad day, and then managing through the rest of the day to check in on that. And the theory is that approaches a bit of a better match than a isolated lesson and you can come back on Wednesday and check in.
That's way to teach. I think one of the things that the elementary teachers realize is that that, you do have to still have some standalone instruction. There are certain things you just have to sort of set aside time to teach kids, like some of the bullying prevention work, for example, that needs to be in that sort of lesson-based format in order for kids to kind of get what we're talking about, what we're talking about, what it needs to be a bystander or... And so they really want to look at, are there other resources that might do a good job around those types of lessons as well? Other things at the elementary, again, they felt really strongly about parent involvement as well as parent outreach. We wanted to find ways that kind of bridge children's school, including getting sort of survey and putting feedback from parents and also having things that parents and kids could do together. And also providing just lots of support and information for parents at home. They also felt strongly about investing in some resources, not just training, so having ongoing, having kind of a, almost like a reference set in your classroom, things you could go to, pull out activity ideas and things like that.
Is there any, are there any ideas, maybe as a matter of fact, of a method of outreach? I mean, would it be, are you gonna have forums or would you think about, you know, having something in a newsletter that they put, principals, for example, and you've got a little box at the bottom that has a, you know, point that, or something that you should unexercise? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it could be any and all of those things. I think the idea is just making sure we're, we're kind of bridging that. Be part of the interest in having a coordinator and having a position is thinking a little bit about that parent outreach part, somebody who's got a little different role so that they're able to do meetings for people who are interested in learning more and running activities and sessions. The middle school recommendations look a little different. They actually kind of check the other approach of thinking about what we want to do at middle school is find the right fit for curriculum. And part of that, I think, rolls out of the fact that they have a structure, an advisory sort of structure, and this would, I think, and they really believe, be a really nice fit for that structure. So given that there's something in place, but you've got a small group of kids and a teacher, this would be a perfect piece. Now, that's not to say you don't also want to infuse your practices throughout the day, but this to them felt like a really good way to start. Interestingly, they want to do more research to find out what's gonna work. There are fewer programs that actually run up through the middle of high school level. Most of the programmatic stuff tends to be at lower grades. And so I feel like we want to take a little time to see what works well. New principal has some experience with another type of program that's similar to responsive classroom, but a little more built up at the middle school level, so he's got some Assessment at the middle school, they felt like they need to do some, a little bit of the assessment of where the faculty are at, you know, what do they know and understand? What do we need to look for them about? In addition, they were looking for a more formalized assessment, skill assessment, like what you were talking about here. We try and really track things above and beyond that regular data that's out there and available, what do we do to get a handle on kids' skills? And I'll always, through middle school, it's helpful to have some parent outreach and it's a time of life where the social emotional realm is challenging for many people at that age to some reason and for parents. And for parents too, figuring out how to help their kids navigate this. Those are some very specific years in things to make sure we are permanently attached to. I'd say if I were to summarize the kind of theme at the high school, it was first and foremost, we need to figure out, to make sure we do no harm in the social-emotional wellbeing realm. That was actually very interesting. People felt like we need to do some examination of our current practices and structures to make sure that we are not contributing to the things that can be really hard on kids. So looking at homework load, I know the academic councils are doing, looking at sort of the assessment calendar and thinking about the way the schedule works and those kinds of structures. Additionally, they were looking at ways of sort of balancing that and also building up a skill set so kids are becoming stronger advocates for what they need. Giving kids opportunities to learn about, you know, how do you ask for an extension? How do you go give yourself a timeout in the workout room if that's what you really need, you know? Some other interesting things, we're looking at the intersection of SEL and some project-based learning, which is this really kind of cool thing that people are talking about right now. That when we do these things like J-Term or like the SIP program, a lot of the feedback we get is actually in the social-emotional realm. There is this academic buzz, but also by putting kids together in kind of novel groups and giving them something that's really hands-on, they see one another in a different light, they see their teachers in a different light, they can work on relationships. That's a really interesting one. And similarly to the other levels, thinking about kind of infusing some of those SEL skills throughout the day as well. These are some of the things I already mentioned, sort of thinking about the overall stress situation for our high school kids. People expressed worry about kids and their sleep, you know, and what we do about that. And also thinking about ways in which the SEL universe intersects with school discipline policies and the story of justice. And we already talked a little bit about the buildings. That was a little more specific, it was helping the high school. So I think that my kind of closing thought was, you know, again, looking back to the why. Why was someone required or why are we working on it? It's, you know, there's a raft of research, but also just even out in business literature, this notion that, you know, the things that people learn in school and their sort of content knowledge is blunties, but often if folks are gonna kind of end up thriving, well, personally, professionally, it's gonna be because of this skill set. And this is a quote that really highlights that. That is my. You'll get the full, so we have the gory detail of kind of everybody we've talked to. That's all getting covered up. So we should have that to.
We'll be thanking all the participants.
Yeah, of course. We're also giving them the first crack at a kind of first launch of some training opportunities too, so that they can really, kind of the work that they've done, they can feel like they're.
Was it difficult to meet the committee there, or?
It was a little unlikely. It's hard. It did, but like you said, it felt like a very different process in that it was all kind of a new realm for us. So I felt like having a lot of ideas and a lot of enthusiasm on the table was actually on the whole a really great thing. A chance to practice social skills. It's really first.
Any questions to them? Thank you.
Let me know how you guys do on those.
Next, we're gonna have a public budget hearing. We've been talking about this now for quite a, quite a few months. We've met with all kinds of groups and received valuable input. So what again, we'd like to do is ask people if you have any questions or comments or suggestions. Just, if you're interested in identifying yourself and your address, we would like to have this opportunity to receive another form of getting input on our budget, opening it up for anybody that would like to offer our thoughts or comments. If that means we've overloaded you with information and opportunities to do this.
I'm wondering Charlie, I also thought it might be helpful if he updates the committee on some things that have happened with the capital budget since we last met. It's, I'd say all in the good news realm.
Sure. In the topic, I believe, was a memo from me describing the additional capital. It's one-time capital that depends, if, that we're anticipating at times going to fund through the hotel meals tax. And what we're gonna do is a figure of $300,000. What we're gonna do with that is we're going to put it towards our priority, which of course now is the middle school for our capital. And we're gonna put that into the heating system at the middle school. So we're gonna take the steam system that's currently there in the old section and convert it to forced hot water and replace all the units in that part of the building. In addition to that, we're going to change the heating controls in the entire building. So that will help make it more comfortable for everybody, it'll be a better learning environment for the students and it'll be great overall.
Thank you. We're doing a conversation now about the budget. We can do that when we talk about the budget. I think we, at this stage, we have no questions from the audience. So I think we'd open it up for school committee questions or suggestions. We would then want to have a vote tonight to support the budget so we can proceed. I also want to thank Keith and Emily. We've been to many meetings with a lot of people, a lot of officials, just to get everybody informed and educated about what we're doing. And that's a great process, all the way bringing down all the information to the decisions and then educating the town committees about what's going on.
And I would say it's been a good process with the town, very collaborative. And this addition that Keith mentioned, the possibility of having another $300,000 to invest in middle school H-back is really exciting from my perspective. You know, we think about our buildings and we've got this big work happening for the elementary buildings. The middle school needs to keep on ticking another 15 years probably. And we hear a lot about middle school H-back. So you move from section to section in the building. It can be pulled in one or not in the other. So this is really great. So we appreciate their working with us on that.
Well, this allows to increase air conditioning. Beyond what we're going to increase.
That's separate. It's already in our regular capital budget.
Right. And this isn't gonna, this won't increase the number of rooms that we're able to air condition.
No, we're actually gonna be doing, increasing that number of rooms within the regular budget. We're gonna be completing the second floor.
So how many rooms are now air-conditioned?
It's a second floor.
That's a second floor. In the old one.
It's only four right now. It's in a really hot situation. How much is left that's not air?
Because some of it, I mean, the eighth grade wing is air conditioning alright. It's really the original part of the building that we've been shipping away in.
Charlie, we do have approval of budgets and actually what we're talking about, but that don't.
Yeah, sure. Of course.
We will have on our action items, the discussion, the budget. Next, we'll have the first reading of the revised policies. And we're listing what the policies are, the most of the way to vaping and other related items.
Yeah, if I could just say, word about that, I realized we didn't do a cover memo, which might have been helpful to understand the context here. So, you know, as you may be aware, it's certainly been a lot in the media about an increase in the use of e-cigarettes or vaping among young people. And Westwood certainly isn't immune to that trend at all. I think it's something we're particularly thinking about at the high school right now and some of the middle school. And what we realized is that we think that our, we have updated our student handbooks to kind of keep pace with the reality of issues that were emerging. But it occurred to us that we hadn't similarly kept our school committee policies on par. And so we took a shot at updating them here. I do want to point out that your policies are related to both students, but also to adults. And so I don't know, you know, where the committee falls on that issue, but we don't currently, for instance, permit smoking by anyone on school property, even at, say, a community event, at a sporting event. And so our thinking here was to, basically just to make vaping similar to.
Can I say something about vaping generally?
Yes.
So I've gotten a number of comments from parents concerning vaping. And I just wanted to relay them to everybody. So first, I've heard, and these are just what I've been told, you know, that people have approached me with, that in particular in the high school, the bathrooms are full of vaping to the extent where kids are scared to go into the bathrooms because they don't want to be associated with the vaping. Another anecdote, there's a rumor that a student was caught with a backpack full of drugs. And that there's been no communication from the school about that or about what the drug use is at the school, what the selling statistics are at the school. And that these people who've approached me have felt very much in the dark. You know, they think that everything is fine and all of a sudden their parent is telling them, well, here's another bathroom. So I'm not sure if this is something that, I don't, you know, I don't think we need to go further on that. But I think maybe thinking about what communications we can make to the parents, particularly since the school committee is updating its policies, the handbook has been updated. I think parents are looking for a little bit of information, particularly about vaping, since it's new to them, it's new to us. I don't even know how to do it. I just think of the, you know, and it's not just one or two I've heard from a number of people.
So let me just say, I mean, first of all, things like adolescent alcohol trick use.
Right.
That's an ongoing concern.
And everyone's familiar with that.
We're familiar with that. That's not a new issue. We've been concerned about that for a long time. And I would say that, I don't know that I would say that we have selling statistics at the high school, right? So we're not, that's not the realm that we're in. I will say that I think it's fair to say that the high school is significantly concerned about vaping right now. This is a relatively new phenomenon. Sometimes things happen with kids and the adults are playing a little bit of catch-up to try to figure out what's happening. I will just note for the public that the high school, the district sponsored a parent evening, I think it was called Vaping: What Parents Need to Know. Last January, which the Westwood Media Center filmed, and it is available on the Westwood Media Center site. I'm thinking that maybe we could just send that out on the lister to people.
Yeah, maybe I want to plan for April.
Okay. Oh.
So last January evening, January 2018, not this past Jan.
No, no, no. So last school year, we did that. And Mr. Bevan's now saying we're planning another evening for April. But, you know, we are concerned about this. And I know that the high school is thinking about how to come at it, both from a preventative, educational perspective and also, of course, from the other end of things, right? Disciplinary consequences. And even some things, we've been pretty frustrated that the building has been evacuated a couple of times because somebody vaping in the restroom gets that off the floor. And that causes considerable disruption to the educational process. And so we've been researching, using technology. There are detection devices that are related to vaping that you can put into the restrooms and we're pursuing that. So I would put that in the deterrent category as well. So we're trying to approach it from many different vantage points.
So I think that's all great. And I think maybe a communication at some point to the parents, to the district about that. As you said, it's been in the media. You know, our local pediatrician is sending out petitions and emails. So I think that parents would feel a lot better, particularly on this subject, if they, if they had a communication about that.
I quite agree. And I do want to give Mr. Bevan credit. He did a lot of that last year in his parent newsletters and whatnot. But, you know, there can never be too much communication.
I would say my frustration, that is a shared frustration. That is a real challenge, what they're saying. And some, that we can communicate about very soon, or depending that, maybe about what some care is doing next week, that we'll be pulling together a variety of different things that I'm happy to share out in our community about right after, right after we pull that together. But I think it will be, we're looking to get some traction here. It's frustrating to get some. We had a real good magic solution we, yesterday, but we're coming at it in a variety of ways.
And you know, just as a plug, Sean just mentioned Westwood Cares. I mean, it is a tremendous organization, group of parents and folks from around the town. And if there are parents that have, there are many parents that have concern, they should jump on that wagon because there's a lot of work to be done and they need the manpower and the help and the input and the suggestions. And that's a, that's a great channel, I think, to work through. I know you just mentioned it in passing, but people should be aware that that would be a great way to.
April 25th event, probably will be a Westwood Cares event. And so that'll be an opportunity for the community to see what they're supposed to, if they're not gonna be able to get to meetings.
And I should mention, we've been talking about the high school, because I think that's probably where the issue is, you know, biggest right now. But we certainly know that with any kind of risky behavior, you know, we need to be thinking about that and educating kids and sort of starting early on some of our preventative measures. So we don't, we don't wait to mention it for the first time.
Chris, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, just to speak to some of the points that were made. Our new school nurse, Peggy Delion, she has a 16, 18-year-old as well, and she's really concerned about sort of this, I don't know if that's sort of, like you said, it's pro-lit high school, but it didn't trickle down to as low as, I think it was really the sixth grade.
It's definitely high school too.
Yeah. So a couple of things, last, two weeks ago, we had a list of counseling this room. And that was our main point. It was talking about how to prevent it. And we talked about like vaping, ability to be evacuated. Earlier that we, there were some posters that were put up in the bathroom to show statistics on like, over a thousand high school students, all the administrators, everyone has to be evacuated from every building on school property because of one kid. Like you said, we have great technology to be able to, I mean, Mr. Bevan, we've had quite high success rate in determining like who the, who the culprit's been.
Yeah, we've been able to identify them after the fact and deliver consequence. But at that point, we already had a, you know, the building could be evacuated.
And throwing an example that was given was students with more severe special needs that sort of, they have sort of like the set schedule during their day. And so the blind fire alarm that lights, the sound that kind of throws off their day. Sometimes they have to be, you know, sent home and their day is sort of, sort of, educators, students are taking a test just by the act of one individual or two individuals. So that was definitely a concern. Our nurse, Delion, is thinking of putting more posters, especially specifically in like bathroom stalls. Like you said, it is true that most of it or all of it happens sort of in like within school bathrooms. And a lot of kids have come to me, the student leaders, saying that like, yeah, like I don't want to use the bathroom in school or like I want to use like the park bathroom in the nurse's office where I know it's like safe. It's not that like a sort of environment where that, those things are going on. So that's definitely a concern. Students are feeling unsafe on school property. Another thing she was talking about was educating parents. She has a bunch of, I met with her on Tuesday, or Wednesday, sorry. And she had a bunch of information she wanted to send out in the next newsletter. Like Mr. Bevan said, we have a one in April with the Westwood Cares.
And so I met with Ms. Delion today and she's planning a big rollout and campaigning in March around vaping and around produce in general, but vaping and being paired with our communications. And so another thing that we're looking at is to, when we catch a student vaping, to have them complete some type of like online model-based program where they can actually look at what the impacts of vaping have. Currently, the perception of risk, the perception of harm for students is very low. Don't really think that there's, there's anything that could ruin their body. It's traumatic. And so we're trying to turn that around. And we're trying to develop a way for them to have to complete something where they, they can take from that and think not that happens. And that's in development, I think, in three, four weeks. We'll have something to do with that. We're pulling together several strategies and issues that I hope will all work together to help reduce so much vaping risk in the building.
I think that's an important point, I mean, you know, for school. And so we think about, sometimes there's bad behavior and there's consequences and, you know, we need to think about that. And we think about, what does it mean to be a member of the community and how do your community members intend? member of the community, and how do your behaviors impact others, I mean, those are important things. And also, sometimes we have kids who are struggling with something, and, you know, it may be that they, you know, develop some habits that aren't healthy, and we want to try to help them with that, in that way as well.
To your point earlier, Emily, about the resorted justice part, that this wasn't how we structured it in the way that some resorted justice programs are, we, students who have set off the fire alarms, we've taken them and brought them to introduce them to some of the students who have disabilities for which a blaring fire alarm will start their day and maybe eliminate, end their day, and end up kind of going home and add them, you know, explain themselves to the students and really reflect on what that experience is like for that student, if they have a choice to vape in that, so we're excited to pressure taking, for that one kid, we did that, that should be an impactful experience, prevented other kids from being in that, from vaping, but so we're getting a variety of different ways to try to kind of stop vaping.
And we're trying to educate everyone to, I mean, mute students or, you know, don't partake, they're concerned about other friends who they know, that's sort of like, you know, my friend, addicted, like I don't know how to help him, like he's really struggling. Like parents, like if, if they know the child's vaping or not, like what, you know, what signs are there? I know Nurse DeLion brought up like irritability, sort of like the energy boost and then having like the sudden crash after, or spending more time in the bathroom or like in the car, if they're more like snappy and unusual, definitely like kids, like getting up using the bathroom more often during school, like how can teachers sort of, not restrict it, but sort of monitor it and just like, you know, educate teachers as well, on a daily level, if there's students in class, like can't concentrate because they need that hit, and they need to, what are they supposed to do then? So, just like educating all parties is really important.
So, and I think this is great, and I think that, I think some parents are just worried that this is going on and the school is sort of, you know, no one's doing it, no one knows about, you know? And so, I think that letting the parents know that this is a problem, everyone is aware, and these are some of the things we're doing, it'd be really helpful.
Sean, thank you. Because it's such an important topic, I'd like to make an exception to our, where we work here and open up public policy again. Do you have a question?
I just wanted to ask or maybe say, I hope that, it sounds like there's an awareness campaign planned for the high school, I hope that something similar will be done at the middle school, so that the kids, well, hopefully before, it sounds like maybe not before, are starting to be more aware of it before they are actually exposed to having an opportunity.
Yeah, so that's a good point, I apologize for leaving Mike out of this room, and I'm talking about, kind of bringing him on board to the initiatives for starting at the high school and make sure that he's, he's kind of reiterating the point of vaping and some of the programming that we, we have, of course, and we're going to talk to our parents, with the middle school parents, so that coordination will begin immediately as well, so.
And especially for incoming sixth graders that, you know, if it is maybe going down that far, I, I just think it'd be so bad, especially coming from the generation that just has not been involved in that. If there's not a rule discipline, you can be like really clueless about what the kids might be facing. So, to be able to give them, like have a conversation with them before they're getting to middle school, so even for the fifth graders, I think it might be valuable.
Thank you.
So, we've also just, I've also had conversations with elementary school principals about this as well, and where it fits in the curriculum of health. And so, we've talked about how in sixth grade, there's a making good decisions unit in health that it comes up, where kids are talking about it, but then at the end of the year, there's also a substance abuse unit that it's being talked about as well. We have Officer Pendel in the building talking about things like this, and also in the elementary. So, I know Principal Cronin and I have connected on this as well, so it's kind of like a vertical thing going on.
And Officer Pendel does plant a touch on it in the fifth grade dare program in the spring.
Any other questions, Ms.? Thank you for putting this material together and educating us on a very important topic. Next, under action items, is the approval of the budget. We've talked about it probably at least a half a...
Do we, I'm calling this the first reading?
Yeah, so this would be the first reading of the policy, and so I'll bring that next month for a second reading.
Is that an action, do you have to wave before, don't you have to wave?
The first reading, you have to, you have to wave.
No, so this was the first reading, and so there's nothing to be done tonight.
Oh, you didn't read it.
Oh, you have to wave before reading. Yes, I'm sorry, he's not tracking.
I have a motion to waive the actual reading.
Exactly.
A favor?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Because procedurally correct. So, the approval of the budget, I think we've had many opportunities to discuss it, make suggestions, and I want to thank the staff for the patience with that and integrating all kinds of concerns into it. But I'd just like to, before we decide to vote on it, if there's any further comments or concerns by the school committee, please let us know.
So, I have two questions. One question will come. So, the question is, so every year, we're February 7th, and you don't know what's going to happen with retirement, so, you know, there's always contingencies and you know what's going to happen, it's on both sides. But if we were to say, if it works out positive, is there anything on that wish list that would be number one on say funding, you kick out your line and say, you know what, we have some positives to present?
Well, so, good question. You know, we have a process as a leadership team to identify priorities, and interestingly, the first thing that had originally been sort of left on the cutting room floor got in, that's the social motor learning coach, when we got students, got the transportation offset from University Station. So, we got one layer down. I would say that if we were to go back to the list of this point, we would probably be looking at, talk about either increasing the high school guidance from point six to one oh, or go back to talk further about middle school guidance. But I, I think it's safe to say that that's the priority that we'd be looking at, I would want to talk to the whole team about that.
Remember the ratio, you mentioned it last time, what is the ratio with the high school?
Yeah, I mean, it's so, I mean, right now, it's like 231, we're trying to get it back down to 200 to one, and point six will do that, but high school guidance has a lot going on right now in terms of student issues, and yeah. So, I think that's a place to look. Having said that, to your point, yeah, there's still flex in the budget right now, sort of even as we go forward voting a number, there are things that we don't know about turnover, and it's, you know, as we get further along in the spring, we're going to know some other things about special education, or, you know, the kids that are aging in to preschool, that we don't, we may have some unknown variables there. And so, you know, it's wise to, we can wait, if we're making those decisions.
All right, so two, one thought on that. It'd be helpful, maybe this procedure, to actually get an update at some point, you know, well, I think September, where we're going to land on that. The other one is, so, I'm very supportive of the addition, we talked a little bit about the middle school, I'm very supportive of the point for, for field instruction. I just want to remind, I think it's October or November meeting, we talked about having kind of an update on the middle school, kind of in the spring.
You know, that's slated for April.
Perfect.
It's on, it's on the, on the agenda.
I'll be waiting.
So, we want to, we know that, so we will do that. And, you know, while we're sort of talking about flex in the budget and all that, I do want to acknowledge that there were several members of public here tonight who were concerned about class size issues and heard it, message received, you know, and we, we sort of have a history of this time in the budget process, having a group of parents from a particular class in a particular school come and talk to us about class size. It wouldn't be February if that didn't happen. And so, we, we also have a history of keeping our eye on those things and making changes as we get further into the process, if we think that's, that's necessary. And, you know, Mrs. Cronin and I have had conversations about that particular class, we will continue to do so, we will look at what resources we may need to have in place. I will say that the space issue with Hanlon is a tough one. Mrs. Cronin and I have walked that building, we have looked at the spaces, and, you know, there's sort of one potential space that, to be totally honest, is subpar. I would not feel good about putting a class in that space.
What space is that?
It's a space that's currently used right now by our literacy specialist, math specialist, ELL, somebody else. It's used by a lot of people, so the first issue is that we have to figure out what to do with them. But it's not a full-size classroom, it would really, I just don't think it would be fair to put a, a class in there. And the extended day space, also for lots of logistical reasons, it would be difficult to accommodate class. But, having said that, I think that there are some other things that we can do, and I, I am happy to meet with people and talk more individually about specifically what your concerns are, so that we can think about that. I will say that, you know, we have the same goals, I believe, and we do have a history of addressing issues like this successfully, and the school committee has been great about putting additional resources where, where they need to go.
Thank you, sir. The, I want to, you know, thank the staff and all the work you put into this budget, and Emily and Keith Go and all the meetings, the town officials, and the school committee for all of its input. And we, we've adjusted a lot of things that we can adjust, and we continue to get things better, you know, squeeze something on something new. So, I think we're very proud of the, the effort that's been made, so. Do I have a motion to approve the budget?
I'll make that motion.
Do we need the exact number?
Oh, in his hand, in his hand. No person's on her.
That's the one thing I remember.
That's right.
All right, so actually, if somebody would like to tell, just keep passing the paper right there, they can read it themselves.
On your readers.
This way.
This way.
Come on, give me a second. Okay, so I'd like to motion, make a motion to approve the FY '20 budget in the amount of $46,463,031.
I'll second that, this is the operating budget.
I'm sorry, yes, the operating budget.
I'll make, I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right. That's good, we're near.
I want to make another motion there. I'd like to make a motion to accept the capital budget in the amount of...
$1 million.
$1 million and 17,000.
How do we get that together?
That would be my motion.
Okay, second.
All those in favor? All right. Again, thank you.
Excellent.
Our last action item is the approval of the minutes of the January 15th meeting.
Do I have a... Make a motion to approve the minutes.
The minutes of the last meeting in January 15th.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much, thank you all for joining us tonight.
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.